Goodbye.
Okay, we'll be starting here in just a minute. We'll give Councilman Schaefer a second to settle in. Councilman Schaefer, are you ready?
Yeah.
We will get started. Well, great to see everybody here tonight. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, May the 6th. Our city council meeting, like our prior meetings, we are streaming live on City Madison YouTube channel and also recording and archiving for later view for those who are not here. As with all of our meetings, we'll begin with an invitation to stand and recite the Lord's Prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll have a roll call. Our Father.
For our covenant, thou art in thy name, that thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay in our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as can we forgive those who trespass against us. And can we just not be temptation, but the Lord will speak to me, with his human power and the Lord's prayer. The Pledge of Allegiance. To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, clerk.
Sure, Patrick Temmott.
Here.
Carla Krebs.
Here.
Lucy Gutierrez.
Josh Schaefer.
Here.
Joel Storm.
Here.
Jim Barlow.
Here.
And John Shulman.
Here.
Thank you. Council will be at an opportunity to review the minutes from April 22nd, so we'll entertain motion to approve.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
A second.
Any discussion? Are you done on page? Would say aye.
Aye.
Any of both. Thank you. I know we have a lot of guests here tonight. You're probably interested in the presentation for our financial plan for the Riverfront, or for the redevelopment commission. That also includes next week, a discussion about the creation of a riverfront district through our zoning changes. We are not talking about zoning tonight. What we're talking about is the financial plan that was authorized by the City Madison Redevelopment Commission, and that's what we'll be making the presentation on tonight. Just to put some more context out there about the purpose of tonight's meeting. I'll turn it over to our council. We'll start with our resolutions and bills.
First resolution is resolution number 2020. Resolution 2025-7C, and as a resolution of common council, the City Madison began transferring certain appropriations and revenue between different funds and, uh, Ms. McGee, do you want to speak on this or?
Yeah, I'll do this on this resolution. Council, as Port Treasurer Bernerson indicated at the last meeting, we still have a couple of funds to clean up from the year end, and that's what this resolution does. It moves approximately $43,000 from our opioid unrestricted, unappropriated monies to eliminate the negative balance in the general fund and small balance in stellar property fund.
So, motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution 2025-7C.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Do we expect many more of these transfers to plug budget holes from last year?
No.
Any other discussion from the council? Anything from the public? Seeing none, we'll call vote, please.
Patrick Temmott?
Yes.
Carla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy Gutierrez?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Barlow?
Yes.
Josh Shulman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is resolution 2025-8, a resolution of the common council of City Madison, Indiana approving the issuance of redevelopment district tax increment revenue bonds of the City Madison Redevelopment Commission and related matters.
Yeah, I'd like to give some remarks. I know everybody's very interested in this. I thank you for your interest and your feedback. In a minute, we'll have Emily give a present, short presentation on the financial plan. We also have Kevin Kellums here in the audience tonight. He is the Jefferson County representative on the Southern Indiana Republican Authority. And we have Gary Smith from RE Financial, who is our financial advisor. Looking around the audience to see if we have any other members of those committees here. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Tonight's city council meeting is focused on an important conversation, one centered around the investment strategies directed by the City Madison Redevelopment Commission. These strategies are grounded in the commission's core purpose, revitalizing our community, eliminating blight, and maximizing our land planning to reverse decades of disinvestment. They're also rooted in a shared belief that Madison's best days are still ahead, and just like our predecessors, the decisions we make today will help lay the groundwork for a more prosperous future. The strategies that we'll discuss this evening are the next step in a long-term vision. That vision was shaped nearly a decade ago through the city's comprehensive plan adopted in 2016, guided by a community steering committee, and built on significant public input, and we continue to build on it today. The 2016 plan encouraged targeted growth and redevelopment within the city limits, prioritizing infill development to strengthen the core of our city and better manage the cost of services. It also included a section called Bold Moves for Change. One of those bold moves challenged the redevelopment commission to find real, actionable ways to stabilize neighborhoods, particularly in Madison's East End, and to implement impactful projects that address our chronic housing needs. The investments we have made for vibrant Madison over the past five years demonstrates the legitimacy of our strategies. And that's what tonight is about. Tonight's meeting is focused on financial planning, the planning authorized by the redevelopment commission to make these bold moves a reality. We'll introduce four major projects tonight that are expected to generate over $80 million in new investment. Combined with the recent groundbreaking of the residences at Sunrise Crossing, we are now looking at more than $100 million in total near-term investment, touching housing, quality of life, place-making, and tourism throughout Madison, all of which positions our local economy for success. This initiative began with a TIF, which stands for Tax Increment Financing Optimization Plan, that was introduced to city council and the redevelopment commission over the past two years, and was an important element of the Destination Madison Plan presented last year to the Southern Indiana RDA, which received very strong support and five and a half million dollars in ready grants due to its regional impact. One of the key tools in this investment plan is the creation of a riverfront district, a designated area to encourage development in parts of the city where commercial property already exists. Tonight is not a zoning meeting about that district. That discussion begins next week on Monday, May the 12th, at the Planning Commission meeting, where those details will be debated in full. A plan that will reduce the need for spot zoning and correct non-conforming uses that limit property owners and our use of our riverfront, as well as limiting our city's potential. A plan that is already amongst multiple other structures on the riverfront, commercial structures. There will be several more public meetings thereafter to adopt final plans and projects. Importantly, these strategies do not increase any taxpayer burden, not a penny of homeowner taxes at risk. There is no new tax rate increase or financial risk to the city. Just continued reinvestment through the tools of the redevelopment commission that it has used for the past 30 years. We believe these investments will help build the infrastructure needed to support transformative projects like Indiana's Music City Amphitheater, Welch Park, downtown housing, and a much-needed new Hilltop subdivision for families. And more than anything, we believe this plan will help reverse more than three decades of underinvestment in our city's core and manage these changes while retaining the beauty and charm of the city, which is extremely important to me and all of you here. There will be many opportunities for the community to weigh in on these efforts, and I look forward to continuing this conversation in the weeks ahead. I'll turn it over to Emily and give the presentation on the financial plan.
Good evening, council. As the mayor touched on, the redevelopment commission is executing plans for housing and quality of life to leverage the expiry TIF districts in 2035. The mayor pointed out, we were awarded $5.5 million for Ready 2, which was more than double of the amount we received in Ready 1. I have a short presentation that highlights the four projects we want to fund through the bond proceeds. So you'll see there we have four projects highlighted. On the top left is the coal property housing at the corner of Jefferson Barn. The top right is the proposed entry-level, single-family housing subdivision on the Hilltop. The bottom left is the Welch Park renovation.
Could we turn over her microphone just so that we can hear her?
Can we talk louder?
Oh, louder. To close her mic.
The bottom left is the Welch Park.
Is that better?
No.
No.
I don't know which volume button it is, but it's one in the cabinet here. Can you turn them all up? We'll interrupt this programming for a short break. Do you find the volume? While everybody gets their popcorn out.
Can you test, test, it's over here.
Hello, how's that?
I think it's better.
Is that better?
I think it's better, many.
Yep.
She's got to be closer to the mic. Emily, thank you.
The bottom left is the Welch Park renovation on the riverfront, and then the bottom right is the amphitheater located by Centennial Park.
Proposed.
Yes, proposed.
All these are proposed.
Proposed. Several of these projects are still in the very early stages, but we need to understand more of our monetary commitments to be able to finalize negotiations and economic development agreements. So the second slide, you'll see these bond dollars are several, one of several complex funding mechanisms for each of these projects combined with grants and private investment. We anticipate more detail soon and are optimistic that all of these projects will break around later this year with the amphitheater being next summer. You can see a rough breakdown of how we plan to spend the bond proceeds. And with these $4.7 million from the bond, we intend to leverage it to create $87 million in investment, which has a multiplier effect of 18 to 1. Gary Smith and Cole Foskrink from RE Financial are here to talk with you about more of the financial aspects of the bond.
And while Gary maybe is getting ready, or we'll put the bond analysis on there.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the City Madison Redevelopment Commission issued its notice of intent to issue these bonds back in March. We've been planning for this for about two years because we have an expiring allocation area, the largest allocation area in the city, called the North Madison Allocation Area, is expiring in about 10 years, and so we're trying to maximize the investment potential from that allocation area. And then in, and then last month, the redevelopment commission executed its resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And then tonight, we're asking city council to opine to the redevelopment commission's authorization and approve the issuance of the bonds.
Bond analysis?
Uh, yeah, bond analysis, please. Good evening, council. So Gary Smith, RE Financial Group, I am the financial advisor to the city of Madison and the City of Madison Redevelopment Commission. And what I'm presenting on the screen right now is essentially the bonding analysis that accompanies the bond resolution that's before you. The bond resolution essentially outlines the maximum parameters for bond issue that we could issue. So the parameters within the resolution include $4.9 million of borrowing at a rate not to exceed 6%. We're confident with pricing and some of the negotiations the city have had with some local banks in the area, that that pricing will come in more like 4.59% and not at 6%. But again, those are just maximum numbers. As mayor alluded to, the maximum duration on a borrowing that we could issue is really subject to the expiration of the North Madison Allocation Area, which is August 1st, 2035. So you'll see that throughout as we go through here. So page three, this is the sources and uses. It's common to see with municipal bond borrowings, where are the sources? Where's it coming from? And where's it going? So the firm amount of the bond's 4.9 million over a life of 10 years, as we discussed. The estimated rate of interest currently is 4.59%. And down at the bottom, you'll see various costs of issuance and bank fee that we would expect to come out from those bond proceeds. And you'll see the actual project fund deposit as we've got it highlighted there, $4,770,000 lines up with the analysis Emily just provided for what those funds would actually be used for. So that's the sources and uses. One point of emphasis I want to point out with this structure, the only source of repayment are the revenues of the North Madison Allocation Area. So at the very top, it says without special benefits tax, there is no added component to this that, you know, the city of Madison would have some sort of tax that they would put on the constituents to pay debt service, for instance. The only revenue that's being pledged are those existing revenues of the North Madison Allocation Areas. If that, go to the next one, please. This is standard scheduled amortization that we've prepared, you know, similar to what you would see with a mortgage or an auto loan. We've got a proposed date of closing, and then semi-annual debt service payments all the way down to 8/1/2035. Roughly level debt service payments, you can see there, about $620,000 per year, coming from the North Madison Allocation Area, $4.9 million in total. And then finally, on page five, this is what we call a coverage analysis. So since these are revenue bonds, and we do have existing revenue bonds pledged against the North Madison Allocation Area, we have to put together what's called a parity report. So those original bonds have, you know, covenants within them to say if you issue additional bonds, you have to play by the rules within that original agreement. So we have to put this computation together in accordance with the rules of those old agreements that essentially say we have sufficient debt service coverage and we are in compliance with our, you know, previous bond covenants to be able to issue these bonds. So this is how the computation works out from left to right. We have a total existing debt service obligations there in the box. The proposed 2025 TIF revenue bond in the next column, semi-annual totals, annual debt service totals, and then we line that up with the compared with the current revenues, just shy of $2 million there. So with that, we're 134%, 135% debt service coverage at the minimum, which puts us over the required amount of 125%. So there's small amount of ring, but not a lot potentially. So again, that'll all be finalized in a parity document that we'll put in, you know, legal documents with parts of dorm bird for the closing. So that's the structure of the financing. If anyone has any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple of questions. So the current revenues listed, $1.94 million this week. That, does the North Madison District include the Sunrise Crossing development? Does it include that into a separate development?
Yeah, great question. So any allocation area that we set up with the redevelopment commission, they have to be separated into their own specific funds and cycled off essentially into their own funds and used for purposes that can form with the economic development plan and a benefit of certain of those allocation areas. So North Madison is essentially the Hilltop area, the legacy allocation area. I think it was expanded 2017, 2018 to include some of the historic as well. Those are the revenues that were specifically referred.
It doesn't include the Sunrise Crossing properties, so those revenues are part of the given this allocation.
Madison Plaza, Supra TV, all of those are all separate.
Regarding the interest over the 10-year period, $1.3 million, are there any creative means that we could help service the principal faster? Are we restricted in order to pay down the amortization faster? Can we take some of that multiplier effect and reduce that interest?
Do you have a call, mayor, in our conversation, the call provisions? We could prepay if we wanted to. Yep. So it's actually common to see 10-year call provisions, where essentially, you know, once you get to that call day, you can start prepaying debts earlier, refinance them at better terms. Since this is a 10-year borrowing, it's pretty uncommon for them to even have call provisions. But the city, you know, I think has got a deal in place where it's callable at any time, as far as I understand.
Yes. Now, whether you would want to do that is a different story because the whole purpose of that tax increment district is to create additional, or to create investments that improve the asset values and bring new investment to a district. And then you get additional tax revenues off of those investments, and then you recycle that into additional investments. So prepaying debt normally works against you because it takes working capital away from future investments and future opportunities.
Yeah, okay. That answers the question. Thank you.
Thinking of those contextual.
But it's a safe, but it is a safe.
But we do, we would have the opportunity.
You would have the opportunity. The redevelopment commission would, you know, make that, make that decision. And what we try to do is structure a safe obligation so that there's no risk of default. And then we take this money and this new investment, this 80-some-odd million dollars that we're talking about creating, will end Sunrise Crossing and Supra TV. They all will create additional revenue for us that we can reinvest across the community. And redevelopment commission is the single tool that the City Madison has to promote economic development in the city. It's a very invaluable tool that we have.
Speaking of the increased tax revenues, so the debt coverage is factored basically currently on only what tax revenue we have today, $1.95. Do we have any estimates for what the projects could bring in increased tax revenue?
The other projects?
The projects that were laid out. How much will that $1.95 go up? Do we have any estimates for that?
We do. There's both known and unknown estimates, but we've modeled out through 2038, projected known investments as of today with what we think. I think it's a really important point because as we plan for the future, obviously, you know, this administration has, you know, $2 million of legacy allocation area revenues that we can do economic development projects with, and 2035 that goes away. So as mayor mentioned, strategic.
Well, that point for a second. In 2035, that goes away completely. And that's why we have this sense of urgency about maximizing its potential now with the opportunities that we have presented with us and those that, those that are also help provide through like with the ready grant program and other sources of either private or public capital. So that will go away entirely, which is important for us to make prudent investments that will generate other revenue streams in other allocation areas. So that will survive, it'll survive 2035. Sorry, I interrupted you, but I want to make that point.
That's exactly, yeah, I totally agree. And some of the revenue projections that we've, we're starting to see and put together now, just with what's known, so Plaza, Supra TV, some of those we discussed, it's around somewhere between a million and a million and a half, once we get to that 2035 range. And the hope is through leveraging these dollars over the, leveraging these 10 years of revenue we have now, we can make that number a lot higher with some of these other projects.
That's what I was wondering. For these projects that we're talking about today, do we have any estimates for those specifically?
I think we had mentioned 81 million, 18 to 1 was a projected overall return. We had to model that out with, in terms of like taxable revenue. I mean, I haven't anyway just yet. Our, our analysis currently is incredibly conservative and just, just, it only includes things that are known with very minimal like annual escalators, like, you know, 2% for instance, just known projects with small escalators.
That $1.95 for the North Madison District should rise with this, these projects, right?
Yes.
TIPS reference for that district will go up?
Or ideally, you know, some of the projects you put in their own allocation areas entirely and preserve the life of how long it's running would be coming into the redevelopment commission. There's some strategies that would be used to do that.
With the multiplier effect, the 81 million, is that assumed over the 10-year period?
The 81 million?
Yes, the 81 million was over the 10-year period. We're going to have a lot of near-term benefits, particularly, but particularly when we get to the housing part of it, we'll start that and it'll kind of unlock our whole housing market, and we'll have new housing construction, and then we'll use a residential TIF format for that. And then that will also create additional tax revenue for us to reinvest. And I think honestly, these are conservative estimates. We're unlocking the potential of Madison. Our future is very bright with the right investment strategies. Again, I think these are conservative estimates.
Sir, anything else from the council for Mr. Smith? Okay. Could I open it up to the public? Or is there anything from the council?
I've got some general, general comments on this. I think it's really disingenuous to say that this is not tied to the discussion on zoning we'll be having in the coming weeks. I think it's, it's putting the cart before the horse here. As it stands now, that project on the coal property cannot happen because it is not zoned for that sort of property. So trying to say we need this money, we need it now, when we've not yet had that discussion that the community is obviously very, very interested in, is poor planning, and I disagree with moving ahead with issuing these bonds right now for that specific matter.
How do you suggest we handle it?
Should have already come to the zoning before, zoning changes before us. We should have already had that discussion because if those zoning changes fail, then this coal project, coal, coal company lot project is off the table.
Well, I don't think you understand how the redevelopment commission.
No, I completely, I completely understand.
Excuse me, sir.
The redevelopment commission.
A point of order. I did not interrupt you. Please do not interrupt me when I have the floor.
And don't imply that I'm not understanding.
One of order.
Point of order.
You're out of order.
Point of order, you're out of order, sir.
As a presiding officer, you're out of order. Please keep your promise. You shall line up for my approval. I will, you. I present the fact that you're saying that all of our efforts are disingenuous. It takes years of planning to get us into a position where we can be successful. And nothing happens in a sequence. Everything is happening parallel. Everything has to come together. And there are a lot of moving parts. It's very, very complicated. It's not easy. I do not believe Councilman Tevinall, who doesn't attend redevelopment commission's meetings, understands how this process works. And let me clarify. The redevelopment commission is charged with implementing the approved redevelopment plan on behalf of the city of Madison, and it's been that way for 30 years, and we've not changed anything there. Over the years, that redevelopment plan is formed by recommendations from the mayor's office. It goes to the planning commission, the redevelopment commission approves it, and city council adopts it. So what we're implementing now is the redevelopment plan that's been approved by city council and by the redevelopment commission and the mayor's office. The redevelopment commission is trying to maximize the investment potential on behalf of the city of Madison. And like I said, there's plenty of moving parts, and it doesn't happen in a nice tidy sequence. If we did that, nothing would happen in, in 10 years. But there's also the ability for the redevelopment commission to adapt and invest in one project instead of another. The redevelopment commission has already evaluated all of these projects, and we all understand that there's still approvals and zoning and negotiations with developers. But to find, as Emily said earlier, it's important that we establish the financial commitment that's going to be made to these projects. And you've seen, as we've demonstrated, the economic benefit is phenomenal. With that said, what I don't think Councilman Tevinall understands is if the redevelopment commission, if this project, if the riverfront district isn't formed, and we decide to just leave that corner lot like it is, undeveloped, underutilized, no tax revenue coming off of it, that can happen, and the redevelopment commission will redeploy the funds. All of this is a strategy to maximize our investments. It will find another investment. I think everybody will agree, we have a chronic housing shortage, and we have to address that. And if it's not on, if it's not a market-rate apartment project downtown, it's going to be an expanded residential development or an apartment project somewhere else. None of this is all or nothing. It's about creating a financial plan and executing a plan within the guardrails that we have in front of us. I think, Kevin, were you, you mentioned you wanted.
I'm, I'm, I'm still, still discussing here before we invite the public to comment on this. So I think it's making these assumptions that I don't understand how this process works is in very poor taste. This is not the first time we've done this. We did this same process.
That's why we.
I, I have the floor, sir, as you so keenly pointed out. We did this same process for developments on the Hilltop, which worked out great. I've been through that process. I've been up here as long. I've been through that process, I've been up here as long as you've been right there, we've, we've gone through this together. To say that, that there's been so many years of planning that have gotten us to this point, but you've still yet to focus on changing the most fundamental part of this very large project here, the zoning project, it's not been brought before us. So as part of that two year buildup, we've done all this work to get us in planning to get us to this point. It seems like poor planning to me to not approach the zoning changes previously, although I will say several years ago, it was brought to the plan commission to rezone a large portion of the riverfront, larger than, than what will be proposed next week. And it was unanimously shot down by the plan commission and the public also had the same opinion. So it's like we're kicking the can down the road here. And I, I think that going about it this way is, and including this project specifically into this plan is, is terrible planning.
Okay, yes.
Is there anything else from the council?
Yes. Okay, so I want to make sure, I feel like I'm the person that I don't have the business sense of everybody else, but I'm a good listener and I'm a teacher. So sometimes I can put it in words that maybe not all of us understand, but I can understand, so I'm hoping to help you guys in this process. Cause five years ago, I would've been out there going, what in the heck, what am I talking about? They're throwing around numbers and terms and, okay. So this is our basic situation, we have an area on the hilltop that is industrial that we receive TIF money from every year. And the purpose of that money is to reinvest in economic development. We can't use it to, you know, pave a road or whatever, it's very specific on what that money goes to.
Point, point of order, we can't use it to pave a road, we're paying for infrastructure.
Okay, thank you, I stand corrected. But anyway, there are very specific things that you can use that money for. And in ten years, we're going to lose a big chunk of yearly money that we get. So we're trying to make the best of investing that two million dollars every year into something that will create more revenue for us for literally decades to come. So today we are only here to decide, do we want to put some bonds out there to be purchased, basically to get us a loan, to be able to invest some of our money that's made directly for that, our portion to invest, to create more revenue for our city for years to come. We're not here to discuss the projects in specific, there will be meetings where we discuss the project in length and you will have an opportunity to come up and voice your displeasure for that specific project. There are four projects, even though only one has really been thrown at you. And Emily did mention those and showed those to you, the park under the bridge, Damon Welch, the bicentennial park stage, okay, a housing development on the hill, and a possible, a possible, please get that part, apartment complex on the river. Okay, so this four point nine million dollar loan that we would take is not just for the apartments, it's for the projects that will create revenue for us as a city for ten, twenty, or more years to come. And we'll be able to use that income to invest into other things. So this is about not just apartment complex, okay? It's about a lot more and I just want you to understand that when we see that we only have ten years left and then that revenue source is gone, okay, we're trying to plan for the future now before that revenue is gone. Now, I'm not saying jump on my bandwagon, I'm just trying to give you an overview from rock bottom person who doesn't do finances to help you understand the position that we're in. So we're not here to talk about do we want apartments or not, we're here to talk about do we want to take out this loan to invest in our city for future? That's the bottom line. And I just want to give you a couple of dates, I want to reiterate, because this is just step one. Step two is the zoning, which, uh, Mr. Tevinall has referred to. And let's say that today we say we're going to get that loan and then it goes to the planning commission and the planning commission says, oh my god, no, please don't do this, it's a terrible idea. Then it goes flat, okay? Um, and that date again is May twelfth, right here, five thirty. If the planning commission says, yes, we think this is a good idea, then it comes back to city council on May twentieth. And we have to decide, do we go with the favorable or negative recommendation that the planning commission gets us? That's just the first reading, let's, and so that's when you come and you can give your opinions again. Then on June third, like we're already into the month of Jim, I know that you think it's tonight, but this decision is still a month or more off. Because then, after it gets through the planning, let's say that we do zone that area downtown, let's say we do pass that, then it has to go all over again with the plans, the specific plans, through the plan commission again, city council again, economic development, historic order review. We are literally months away from a final decision on this, how we're going to spend this money. These are proposed ideas. And yes, we've done some research and some background and we've had some renderings to kind of give you an idea, but we're a long way from deciding yes or no. And the last thing, and I promise I won't take any more of your time, is that I think that we have proven over the last four years that we are a council that listens. Okay, when the Ohio Rivers, okay, well, I'm sorry, you can agree to disagree and I can respect that, okay? But when the Ohio River Sea, Ohio River Legacy Park Project, the public spoke up, we took a step back, we changed some things and we reached a compromise that I think everyone was happy with, or most people were happy with. When the solar panels came to us, we listened for three hours. We listened to the people, we visited with the people, and we turned it down, okay? We are not a group of people that just, oh yeah, whatever you want to do, we'll sign our names. Even though some people like to portray us like that, we're not, I can guarantee you that we are not. So anyway, I want to thank you for being here and I want you to know that we do listen. And this is my struggle right now and I've shared this with a number of people, because I was elected to represent the district to people. Okay, so let's say that, and I am getting texts and I'm getting emails and I'm trying to respond back to those. But let's say that I don't think, even though people are giving me negative, negative, what if I believe that what's really best for them, but they don't know it, is to reinvest in our city? So my struggle is to represent the people that elected me, but to also make good choices for the city. So we do appreciate your input and please don't let people say or speak for us that we don't listen to you, because we do. We may not agree, but we do listen and we do consider your thoughts and opinions. And thank you for the people that listen.
Would you please ask in, in the audience if you could just refrain from making remarks while others are speaking?
I think this is, um, this discussion sounding a lot like the, uh, the famous quote that came out of the discussion when the Affordable Air, Affordable Care Act was passed back about fifteen years ago. The bill was so big, you've got to pass it to know what's in it. And I think that some of the projects contained within this are a big middle finger to fifty years of preservation and the much loved nature of our riverfront.
Councilman, I'm going to ask you to maintain decor that was very unnecessary, rude and inappropriate.
I don't think it was, I think, I think it adequately describes the opinions I've been hearing from my constituents.
Uh, very disgraceful.
One, one point on the matter, I think this is a very interesting topic, I think there's a multitude of opinions. I would just like to express kind of where I'm trying to think and gather.
Ask if you'd pull your mic, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
There we go.
Cause at any given point, there'll be, there may be a fifty fifty, uh, of what I'm hearing. So when I'm trying to make an assessment and understand what's going on, I try to be as data driven as possible. You know, for the past fifteen years, using the military decision making process, um, you know, planning is, is great, it's necessary, it helps us drive out and problem frame. But we have to understand, there is paralysis through analysis as well. And that's not to say that we should make brash decisions, but we should use like key data and, and statistics in order to come to some conclusions and then weigh that against public opinion and also the zeitgeist of our town. One thing that kind of excites me with these projects, um, is that, you know, we stand on the shoulders of giants. With this historical preservation, we have made good means to create, I believe, America's largest contiguous historical district. Um, and we're very proud of that, by no means would we want to undermine that. However, when that was created, that was their present, that wasn't their history. And I think for a lot of the youth that are excited about these potential projects are that our present will one day become someone else's history. And it doesn't mean it has to be the apartments, but those are the kind of features that I keep in mind that excite me, that compel me to, to look into and say, what should we be doing, what should, you know, the present be doing to create our history? And so I would love to have more of that conversation with you guys openly and freely. Um, but those are kind of the decision points that are, are driving me, so I look forward to having that discussion with you guys in the future.
Anything else from council? Sign there, or go ahead for the public?
Hi Kevin Kellins, I am, uh, pleased to be speaking with the public. Uh, I was asked to maybe present, um, because of the role I play on behalf of the county and the city. I am Jefferson County's representative, which means Madison's handovers everyone's, on the regional development authority board. It's a five county board, just as a point of basic explanation, I hope to bring a little more light and heat in my little comments here. And I want to start by saying I'm glad I'm on this side of the desk, not that side. I once sat where Jim Bartlett, the council of Bartlett's sits. Uh, so, you know, it's hard for me to disaggregate, um, this role, speaking to you as your RDA, a representative. I'm also a former attlahers member of council. Uh, I, um, have a fifth generation farm in the county, have been running a small business in Madison, out of Madison, uh, since two thousand and seven. I'm a former, uh, homeowner in Madison, fourth generation to do so, uh, and eighth generation in the county. So I care, I care a lot and I appreciate the hard work you're all doing here. I just came from a real estate conference, statewide gathering of realtors, uh, who were in Hooky Park Inn. And it really amounted to two days of, um, two days of presentations to a statewide audience of how good a job Madison is doing. Uh, as an example that they're looking at, uh, from all across the rest of the state. And these presentations were being made by Madison residents largely and county residents. So I thought that was a real feather in the cap of everyone who's involved here. The, uh, the statewide director of the Ready Program was also there for both the days. So he's got to sit and listen to, uh, the attributes of this city. And, uh, I just want to come to you too also as someone who is a lifelong advocate for historic preservation and have actually worked full time in historic interpretation. I spent my adult life, uh, preserving, uh, a fifth generation farm with seven buildings. I take this stuff very seriously and I'm a passionate advocate too, uh, for the, for letting in others see what we have and attracting more talent, attracting more people. Uh, and sometimes that's also in the, in the service of being, you know, an advocate for arts and culture development here, which has been a great success and was one of the topics of the conference. So that's the background and I don't know how to disaggregate what I'm about to say, except to tell you, I, I'm going to tell you what I know and what I think. But mostly I want you to take away maybe a better understanding of what the regional development authority does and doesn't do. Now, we do look to local leadership to make nominations of projects and we've been assessing, uh, projects across these five counties for a second round of ready funding. The first round, Madison, uh, really performed well. And in the second round, uh, been earmarked for about twice as much money as in the first round. Uh, for those who aren't familiar with what happened in the first round of ready, the Ohio Theater facade, the Gateway Project, the enhancement of the art, and creation really, the Arts and Culture District centered at Second and Mulberry, the sidewalks curb, street lighting and parking lot across the street, we got the main parking lot with the Kinesphero, but also DG Marketplace benefited from it. So we got sidewalks curb, street lighting, basic fundamental things that matter, but also attracting people to a, to a city that has a lot going for it, there's a lot of energy. Uh, and so tip, tip of the hat to each of you and the roles you've played in those and other aspects of the, uh, the projects that came through in the first round. Now, what we do is spend two years assessing county by county, county, uh, city by city, town by town, every project that comes in. And we do site visits, we go and listening tours, but we also operate, uh, public meetings. And these two projects that are part of this funding project, the funding package, as I understand it, again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the city, but I'm telling you about the intersection between where these state and federal dollars come into your, your community and how they can be leveraged. Two of the projects, um, are part of this package, uh, they scored very, very highly in our process, right? In our process, uh, the bicentennial park permanent stage amphitheater, if you will, uh, as well as, uh, the proposed coal property housing scored very highly, they had strong support among all five board members. Now, we vote and we do roll call votes. And, uh, we also have some, you know, pretty, uh, aggressive and thoughtful, uh, executive sessions. But I can tell you that those two projects worked very well and the state was very enthusiastic about both of them. Because they met the objectives that the state had. Um, and the one objective in terms of beyond quality place, beyond attraction and workforce development and retention, the fundamental need that we have now in the region, I can speak to the entire region, is housing, housing and housing. Housing at all price points, uh, housing of different styles, uh, in different places. And I gotta tell you, I see a tremendous need in this community for housing in many places, in many styles, in many price points. That's part of what we're instructed to do too by the state. Now, the state has the final call and they, you know, have a responsibility obviously to all taxpayers statewide that these regional development authority monies are spent in a way that benefits, uh, the region, uh, but also is very defensible, uh, from a statewide perspective. And the legislature, you know, put their money where their mouth was after the first round. And the governor, uh, attracted, the former governor attracted additional funding from Lilly and others. Um, I would say that, um, as a longtime advocate for this community, I believe it's important to listen to the public though. I, uh, as a former member of the council, I, I campaigned on community engagement, that's why I'm so pleased to see so many people here, pro and con, sideways, maybe neither pro nor con. I always hoped that, uh, public officials would listen and I believe they are. And I know these are hard decisions, again, I'm glad I'm not on that side, I'm on this side. But I want to tell you that we've got something special here and I think, uh, nothing's being decided as I understand it as a, uh, uh, and with any finality now. But, uh, the opportunity for, uh, this community going forward, I think, um, again, as someone who's passionate about historic preservation, about history, about this, this city and this county, um, I would, I would, I would encourage all parties to listen to one another going forward before making final decisions. And our assessment was very in depth and we will continue to, to listen going forward. The round of two point oh ready has been decided, we obviously have a new governor. There's a little bit of transition time slippage between the two, that's normal. So, uh, when the green light go button comes, we'll let you know, uh, but you have a decision to make that is local and local is the foundation of what we try to do regionally. The final thing I'd like to say is that every project that makes it, we try to make, we try to make certain that they're judged in such a way that sure, they're important to the local community, but they must be of regional value and they must, uh, fit our regional and state objectives. And my estimation, uh, as presented to us and through the process we've been through, which was public, proud to say that as an RDA, we operate under public, Indiana Public Records and public meeting laws, uh, just as you do. And we invite anyone who wants to come to them, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anybody else from the audience want to speak?
Anybody can come to the podium and make a statement, please?
Or sign in.
That's later, that's for later.
Well, that's, that's for the overall.
Anyone's welcome to speak, we are going to ask each person who's speaking to limit their remarks to four minutes or less.
Uh, I'm Charlie Brickets.
There'll be another public speaking opportunity in the meeting.
You're good.
It's on, it's on.
Okay. I'm Charlie Brickets, uh, I live at seven oh seven West First Street and many of you know me because I've been here before. Kevin, I think at one time you mentioned federal funds, did you mean state?
The, the first round was federal fund.
No, in the first round was federal funds, second round was state, basically.
Money's coming from the state. Thanks for that. Would it be possible to have the pictures back up of part of this project?
What, the four pictures?
The four pictures.
From Emily's slide?
Yes, the four pictures. I guess it's okay to, since they were brought up, it's okay to comment on them. Those are very nice pictures. However, they kind of lead me wondering how far up in the air they are. The hotel or whatever it is. It looks like it's sitting on ground level. Is that, can anybody tell me if that's a fact?
That's not a hotel. You talking about on the left?
Yeah.
That's a rendering of the apartments.
Yeah.
And as will be presented in the planning commission meeting next week, they'll set forth all the restrictions that would go along with any district with maximum height. So, that building as you see there, it has to be two feet above the base flood elevation. And then the maximum height above that is 45 feet. And so, that would put you a little bit less than what the cotton mill is.
Well, the base elevation on that piece of property is around 452.
So, that's measured in feet there?
Measured in feet by the DNR. And to get above the flood elevation level, you'd have to go to another 12 to 13 feet.
The podium on the bottom, which is the onsite parking, is, and you're exactly right, it's about, the base flood elevation's around 10, a little over 10 feet. And so, two feet above that would be the podium height, which is around 12 feet. And that would be where the on-street parking would be, onsite parking.
And we have a maximum, it looks like the four stories. So, if you figure 10 foot a story, that's 40 feet on top of. So, you're approaching 60 feet in height, just for people's reference.
It's like, you're exactly right sir, it's less, a little bit less than 60 feet. And then it's, if you actually drew a line from the top of that building all the way up Jefferson Street, it's about the height of the Meyer Building on Jefferson Street, and a little shorter than the height of the cotton mill.
So, you got parking shown to the side there, but what's underneath the?
Parking is underneath, so.
Parking, and parking beside it and underneath it?
Yes, the lower level, that's gray level, is all parking.
The picture beneath the colored picture said, is that parking on the left there?
The, your, the, that's Welsh Park's one. So, there's four renderings there, the left one is just.
That's Welsh Park, I'm sorry, I confused that with the.
Yep.
Alright, thanks for that clarification. So, the parking will be underneath the apartments?
Yes.
Okay. Now that we've got that clarified, I'd like to go on to the bonds themselves. I need a little education here, the TIF, I guess that's what it's called, tax increments. That's levied on, you said mostly rooftop industry and so forth.
It's levied on commercial and industrial property that are included in each of the five or six allocation areas.
So, that's a tax based on their value they're holding.
It's a, the regular property tax that they pay. And a portion of that is dedicated to the redevelopment commission to reinvest across the city per its economic development plans.
So, it's a portion of their property tax?
Yes, I may say sir, it's been four minutes. Yes, we have a four-minute limit on speaking.
I thought that was at the end of the meeting comments.
It's for all speakers.
Okay.
Thanks sir, but I'm happy to follow up with you, Mr. Rickets. If you have any specific, other specific questions, I'll be with you. We just want to make sure there's time for anybody else who'd like to speak. Thank you, Mr. Rickets.
Hi, I'm Jan Bakers, and I live at 701 East Second Street. I got a question about the zoning. You gave us some dates, Carla, for next meetings. But what's the meeting on Thursday at 3:15? According to the city calendar, there is a zoning ordinance update committee?
Is that just a small, a small group of people that are updating our policies?
Yeah, there's a steering committee. So, City of Madison, I'll address that real quick, Jan. The City of Madison.
Because it's not really what you think.
There's nothing to do with this. City Madison is operating from a zoning ordinance that's 15 years old and a subdivision ordinance that's probably about 30 years old.
Okay.
So, we are, we have a year-long initiative underway with the steering committee to evaluate our entire ordinance. So, that's that meeting on Thursday you're probably referring to.
Okay, so the change for the zoning for the riverfront is not part of what that committee's doing? Or is it incorporated into?
It's incorporated and they're doing, they're doing all zoning districts across the state.
So, do we need to also attend that 3:15 meeting?
You can if you want, but they're talking about each chapter and all.
Right, but will they be discussing the riverfront?
The, you should come to the plan commission meeting, because that's what's established with regards to the ordinance, the map, the scheduled uses. That's where this riverfront district.
The main 12th meeting is the one you want to be at.
Yeah, and the overall zoning change for, overall, will be done well after.
Probably still four, four to six months away on the other.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, because I'm old and I've lived here now 35 years, I just wanted to remind you that we have heard some of these same conversations when riverboat gambling was coming. And if we didn't approve it there at the foot of West Street, the docks, the city was going to die. And we've actually thrived. And many towns that put in riverboat gambling are now struggling and have realized that they destroyed their historic district. So, just to watch out. We also worked with MDOT, because the original plan for the new bridge was to go straight down Jefferson Street and across the river there, 421. That was the plan. And everybody was like, well, yeah, that was the plan, so we should do that. Until they saw how high the concrete, I don't know what you call it, walls to get the bridge up to height, so it wouldn't be in the flood plain, the approach, and suddenly realized our town would be cut half, because the bridge approach would be so high, right in front of the courthouse. Immediately, people said, no, we don't want to destroy our historic town. So, those are two examples of what's happened in the past. And I will get some balloons up there to show you kind of what it's going to look like at the heights that we're talking about. So, you can get a visual as opposed to just reading numbers on paper. For some of us, it's hard to understand that, so, thank you.
The visual is looking at the cotton mill, I think.
Just a real quick comment about the cotton mill. I did go back to my notes, because we worked on that very hard as well. It is 50 feet high, four, or three floors of 12 feet and one floor of 14 feet, I believe. And it is also already elevated and back from the river considerably. It also has a whole row of trees that have been there for a long time, so that it is not a new blocking of all of the neighbors that live there. So, just to put that in perspective, new construction, blocking historic homes that have been there, and blocking the view of the historic district from the river, is what we're really talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Hello, this is Deanna Shelley, I live on Wall Street. And my main question is.
Can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Since there's going to be new structure in a very visible area, how could this possibly affect our historic registry status? Because we can lose it if we do too much that's new. So, I just wondered if the city has re-studied the specs that's in that document to be sure that we're not going to forfeit something for a new structure?
That's a very good point, and yes, we'll take all those precautions. And this does have to be approved by our historic district board review.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everyone can check, because I do think that's a caution.
Thank you, Shelley.
Rick Taylor, 1014 West Main. I just want to, I just had a question. The earlier discussion you guys had going back and forth, councilman you mentioned, it was disingenuous to try to get the funding before the zoning. Well, my question is, what good would getting it zoned if you don't have any money for it? Approved for it? That's just my question.
Thanks, thanks, Joe.
Anybody else?
Carrie Litchfield, 312 Quail Ranch Lane.
If you mind pulling the mic down, and repeat what you just said, so we can get it for the record.
Carrie Litchfield, 312 Quail Ranch Lane. And I first wanted to say thank you to Council Tepanoff for letting us know about this, because I don't think a lot of the community did know about that. And I just wanted to say that I think it is disingenuous and it is putting the cart before the horse to ask us to look at this and approve this amount of money, based on the fact that it's on four projects, one of which the community, from what I'm hearing, does not agree with. And that's it.
My name is Champ Austin, reside at 722 West Third Street. You know, it's interesting, we're at a meeting to discuss the financial aspect of this. And that's what I want to stick with. What was interesting to me is I've been wrestling with this, I've been asking questions, been talking to people, and reached out to Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Tepanoff, Carter Krebs, Bob, you and I've gone around about two or three times. But I've also spoke with Shirley Ryanerson, a lot of the questions that have been asked regarding the finances, I've already got. It's very, the meeting with Mrs. Ryanerson was very educational and was important to me to get a grasp of this. In my office, I work with clients quite a bit. And a lot of times, we have to talk about the financial aspect of their personal investments. And a lot of times, what I'll do is I'll pull out a dollar and say, if I told you that this one dollar will buy you 100, would you do it? But we need to make that decision fairly quickly, or the one dollar's going back. You'd be surprised how many people would not take the dollar and spend it. And they lose the 100. I just did the math in my chair. If those projections are correct of revenues, we're throwing away a dollar. I don't think that there's a question here. This is not set in stone. But what will be is if we lose the revenue, because we're talking a dollar. I want to keep this, because this meeting is about finances with that aspect in mind. And I'll close with this. It's sad that we're talking about this. And when I talked to Mrs. Ryanerson, I asked her, how many people have called? You're looking at them. That's the sad part. We can have all of our opinions that we want to, but we need to get back to the facts. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Hello, I'm Randy Bellamy, 409 East Third Street. We're talking about the financing. You guys have put a deadline of like 10 years for a portion of the financing. What happens to that money in 10 years? Does it go away? It disappear? I mean, it's the tax rate, still.
Yes, it does disappear.
Where does it go?
What I mean by that is, and Gary can chime in on this, is that during the life of that allocation area, which is set by the state, we do not arbitrarily establish it. We take those additional revenues and we reinvest them to create more development, more housing, more infrastructure, more grocery stores, you name it. Our track record is really good. And what the reason we're, Mr. Bellamy, the reason why we're creating a sense of urgency is the fact that, yes, in 10 years, the revenue that we're receiving now off of that allocation area does not come to us directly anymore. Now, it gets distributed out amongst all the other units of government in the county. That would be the schools, the library, the city, the townships, the town. And we do not have that source of revenue any longer for concentrated economic development for the benefit of the city of Madison. So, that's, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's an explanation of that.
I understand, I just, I just was wondering, you know, it just seems rather strange that all of a sudden that money just disappears. Well, it doesn't disappear, it just goes to other places that we need it.
It does disappear from our redevelopment commission.
Yes.
That's the key.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Robert Stacer, I reside at 518 East Second Street. I've heard that we have a housing shortage, and I don't know who we is, because I have a house, I don't have a housing shortage. What I think people may mean by that is folks want to move here and they can't find a house. Generally, I don't think that's the government's job to solve that problem. I think that's the private sector's job. If somebody wants to buy my house, they can offer me enough money and I'll sell it to them. But I don't think it's the government's job to build housing. There's a spectacularly abysmal record, not at this Madison level, but federally, of the government doing things that are more properly and better handled by the private sector. And it really concerns me. I don't want to see Madison's government using land and building homes that people might not want. And I just don't think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Just to answer that, Mr. Baker, thank you for your remarks. We're not building the housing. We'll have partners, developer partners, who will come in and do that. They will be taking financial risk. They will be making the tens of millions of dollars of investment to build the housing. What we're talking about here is what do we need to do either for infrastructure investment or incentivizing them to come here and make their investment in Madison? But we, the city of Madison, are not the developers.
But that million dollars for the upper left-hand Coal Valley? What's that if that's not trying to get a developer to do it?
It is trying to get a developer to do it. It's going to be a $15 million project. But there's stormwater, there's sidewalks, there's grading, there's street improvements. That's what the redevelopment commission does to help partner with those investors and developers to attract their money here to make that investment that serves our entire community. And we do have a chronic housing shortage because of a lack of supply. We have people that can't move anywhere. We have people that can't move here, they have to commute here and drive somewhere else home. We have young families that can't get out of their moms and dads' houses, or they can't get out of an apartment or a substandard place to live. This is, this is creating, this will create a chain reaction for all of the markets in the city of Madison that desperately need housing.
I don't think this one will do that. Now, how many, how many people are going to live in that Coal Valley building? And why should 13,500 people in Madison go into debt for, what, 20, 30 people who are going to move there? That just doesn't seem right to me.
My name is Pam Coker, I live at 2812 Springwood Drive, and I lived in Madison until downtown.
Ms. Coker, I'm sorry, would you mind pulling the mic down toward you?
Sorry, you sound too loud on the voice. Okay. My name is Pam Coker, I live at 2812 Springwood Drive, and I lived in downtown Madison until 1992. I've never lived anywhere else. I do know that when my son and his wife came in, she was very disappointed, not finding very many Madison-made items to buy. That would have been a source of revenue. I don't know how much that's been corrected, I still don't see that much. You know, like at the Appalachian Mountains, they have, they're. You know, like at the Appalachian Mountains, they have, they're cracked fairs and so on. I do know that when people come in across the bridge, they love to see Madison. And the more trees they cut down, the less they like it. So I hope that you guys will consider that because I noticed that I go up and down the hill, it's getting hotter and hotter and hotter, which is not good for our health. So when you're laying out the money for the projects and so on, please consider that. Also, a lot of people will say, my sons and age and stuff, they go out of town for entertainment. Income loss. We need to try to get some kind of programs, go into that, some businesses, I don't know what, but again, I hope that you guys will consider that. Thank you very much.
Debbie Beaman, Walnut Street, Madison. Um, guys, um, here's my concerns. I don't know if this is going to happen, I have a good feeling it will. The building down on the river concerns me because I don't want it to be the start of something that takes over. My son lives in a town, an old, old town, all storefronts, and now it's nothing, nothing, but condos and high rises everywhere. And the storefronts have moved out, they're gone. And this is my concern, that if we start this, you guys tell me that we will have a grip on it and it's not going to get out of here. That's what I'm concerned about, because that would change Madison to me totally. And, and Madison, I love this town, I love these homes, I love these places. I don't want it to change dramatically like that. That's all I have to say.
My name is Ed Steagle, I live at twenty five twelve Green Hills Drive. First, I want to thank you all for all the work that you're doing. I know it can't be easy. But as we talk about funding, we might be a long way from the beginnings of this project, but at the same time, you're asking us to write a check or to agree to a check being written. But we really don't know how that check is going to be implemented. And I think that that is a concern of mine and a concern of others. As we as we look at the information that you guys have shown, you know, as I think about our financial plan, I, I think we have a homeless problem, and I think that we do have a problem of housing for members of our community. Not members coming to our community, but members in our community. And therefore, I would think that as we think about plans, that those people need to be thought about first as opposed to second or third. So that they could have the means to live in our community that they are already a part of. You know, I'm not opposed to us doing redevelopment, and I'm not opposed to us doing, improving our, our community. So I'm not opposed to attracting people to our community, but in all honesty, it shouldn't be at the expense of the members of our community. And we might be bringing money into Madison, but what will that cost be to the people of our community and how will it be extracted from, from them in that way? You know, I recognize that you talk about time also. And I want you to be able to invest your time well. And some of the projects that you're asking us to write a blank check on, we, we may need you to invest your time differently so that as we look at the time factor and the need to get these things done, that you're using your time in a way that the community is going to find to be acceptable. I know we're not talking about rezoning tonight, so I'm not going to talk about rezoning. But Madison does have a bright future. And, you know, the redevelopment committee from years ago recognized the beauty of a riverfront area. They placed restrictions to maintain that beauty so that it would be beautiful for us today, right now. And part of what you're asking is for the destruction of that thought process so that something can be created that members of our community, children of our community fifty years from now won't have an understanding of how beautiful our riverfront area is. Because I recognize and I understand that as we think about a process of rezoning, that once that happens, for one, it is a precedent-setting moment. And not to think- No problem. And not to think that other buildings of that size or of larger magnitude would not happen, I think is a farce. So I need you to think about, this is a precedent-setting moment that you guys are getting ready to do, whatever your decision is. Thank you.
Angie, excuse me, Angie Williams, eleven seventeen West Main Street. Carla, I want to thank you for your explanation because that helped me understand a lot more. I do think that it is a wise choice to have a plan together before you go to the zoning commission. If you're asking them to rezone, they kind of would need to know what they're rezoning for. But the one million dollars that is for the coal property, what happens to that? If you pass this tonight and it goes before the zoning and they say, no, we don't want to do this, what happens to that one million? Or is the whole thing gone?
I can answer that. The redevelopment commission is working on a redevelopment plan, and it has a very detailed plan of objectives. It would reinvest that money somewhere else.
Okay, so it's, you know, it could still go forward even-
And if they, if they wanted to utilize that money for something that was not within that plan, that has to go to the planning commission, has to go to the city council, and so.
Still has to go through a little process. Okay, and then I appreciate also the picture, the rendering, because that is definitely not what I had in mind. I know a lot of people are talking about how this is a high rise and, and how large it's going to be and how tall is this white building across from, I don't remember what it's called, but the white building across from the post office? Is it going to be a little bit, is it going to be-
The top of the proposed building is about equal to the top of the Meyer building, which is there on Jefferson Street at First Street.
Okay.
So it's-
Okay, that's not-
It's not out of scale for the area.
It's not the tremendous building that I thought it would be. And as far as I, the housing, personally, I, you know, I live down on Main Street, I do have a home, so I don't have a shortage. But we have been looking to move. And if you're, anybody in the process of looking for a home in Madison, as I am, my sister is, my daughter is, and my son. My son is choosing to move out of Madison because he can't find a home here that he, that he would be happy with. We cannot move. We have friends that are moving, I have a lot of people who are looking for housing in Madison, and it's, there's not a lot. There really isn't. Whether it's affordable housing or market value housing, I think that we do need that. And it's for not just people coming here, it is for the residents that are here now.
We need housing across all the spectrum.
Yes.
We have a partnership with Habitat for Humanity up there. Just the groundbreaking for the first phase of the residents at Sunrise Crossing, which is affordable housing. This is market rate, so the plan is get people to move to the market rate and be, and put more supply in the market that way with their homes, if they want to downsize from an apartment instead of a home, for example. And then the, the single-family subdivision, we've made a commitment to Madison to make that entry-level housing. I don't know if anybody's noticed or not, but there's not been any entry-level housing subdivisions built in Madison in over thirty years. These, we, our families need these investments. And we are working in partnership with developers for them to do the construction and invest in tens of millions of dollars, and for them to make a bet on Madison, and that benefits every resident in our community and our region.
And then that fourth, there's the coal property, the Welch Park, the amphitheater, and then what is the fourth one, the housing? Is that's going to be a, it's not Sunrise Crossing?
Subdivision on the hilltop.
That's a different, whole other. Okay, so adding more housing.
It's a very comprehensive strategy.
And the four point nine million is not coming from my taxes that I pay for my home.
Correct.
I just want to-
Industrial property.
That's my understanding, and I just want to echo that because I keep hearing people say that as a taxpayer, I'm paying for it.
And no risk to you either. Thank you.
Point of order, real quick, on, for clarification, on the height of this structure. The height of the Meyer building versus the height of the proposed apartments at the, the coal property? The Meyer building, sixty, sixty feet? Where, where do you bend?
If you, if you drew a line from the top of the coal property to the top of the Meyer building, it would be a flat line. And there's a major grade change.
Okay, so here's, here's the important thing to understand here. The grade change from the foot of Jefferson Street at Vaughn Drive, this building would rise to the point of the Meyer building at the corner of First Street at the top of the hill, so it, it's a substantial building, so it's not really a fair-
I'm not saying it's not substantial, I'm saying it's not out of character for the area.
From Vaughn Drive, to, to consider, to consider it from Vaughn Drive.
Heightwise, heightwise.
That would be completely character.
My name is Stephen Cox, I live at five oh eight Broadway Street here in Madison. And I just had a couple of things to say.
Sir, what was your last name?
Cox.
Cox, thank you.
This Madison Historic District is approaching fifty-two years this coming month. A lot, hundreds of people have put a lot of blood and sweat into developing this historic district. Madison is known, that's what brings all the people in, for the historic district. And I know it's a hard job for all of you to make these decisions. But I think we need to keep in mind that once we start deviating from the original principles of this historic district, we're sliding down very slippery slope. And we'll not have a historic district if people want to continue to build high rises on the riverfront and that type of thing. I think this is something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Chapa, I live on East Street in Madison. So everybody's been talking about the financing aspect, and I'd kind of like to back up a little bit and talk about the use of the building. We've talked about how much, and we do need affordable housing in the community. So just to clarify, I think I've kind of heard pieces of my answer. So to clarify, this is not affordable housing, this is going to be, is it condos or apartments?
It's market rate rental apartments.
Okay, so market rate rental apartments. Okay. So probably anyone who lives downtown who's already struggling paying for rent or looking for a place to rent, which I hear a lot. A friend had a place on Third Street for rent and had over ninety-five contacts in less than two hours for people who wanted to rent the house. So, so obviously, it's pain. So this particular project isn't going to impact any of that pain of people looking for housing because this is going to be high-rent apartments.
It, it's all part of a plan, and you have to look at all- This is so much fun, guys. You're, you're so kind. This is all part of a plan to introduce supply for all price points. And I mentioned that this isn't the panacea of everything. And, and what, what we got to do, though, is we have to unlock the potential of our city and get people to invest here. And that's why I keep saying that our programs, our initiatives, our other past investments are about the whole spectrum. That's why I brought up the partnerships with Habitat for Humanity, the Affordable Housing Project on the hilltop. Our PACE program that is impacting hundreds of properties across our historic district and bringing many of those dilapidated, unmaintained structures back into the supply. So you can't look at it as just one thing, you have to be very comprehensive about it. And it's working, but you also can't, you can't ignore the market rate part. You can't just build restricted rent apartments. What you should be able to do, right, is make investments that create a more vibrant economy, that attracts people to move here, that expands the tax base, that supports our businesses, and, and gives everybody a high-quality, everybody a high-quality place to live.
Yeah.
So we're talking about fifty-three, fifty-three apartments, and nothing's been built, market rate, for fifty-three apartments in decades. So we, we're, we're missing out on growth in our community. What I'm hearing a little bit is, we don't really want to grow, and I get you, I want to keep our historic district beautiful as well. I'm personally heavily invested in the historic district. But we have to look at all of these strategies, and it has to be a comprehensive plan across all of those.
Right, I totally understand that whole plan. However, what I'm talking about is-
Your mic's off, sorry.
Okay, there we go. I, I, I accept the whole plan, and I believe that, yes, it is necessary to invest in a variety of areas. However, since right now, it's, I think what a lot of people might be most concerned with is, we have more of a shortage of economic, economic housing than we do market rate housing. And the people who come here from out of town usually do the, the market rate housing. And, and it seems often that a lot of people locally feel that it's being robbed from them in a sense, that they're not able to afford anything, but yet we're developing to bring in more money versus perhaps the first project could be affordable housing downtown. Just things to think about, because that's, everybody's upset about this high rent district when we don't have a low rent. I mean, we have it, but it's those buildings that you keep talking about that we need to get fixed up. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm Shelley Murphy Smith, and I live on four eighteen D Second Street. And I don't think anybody is opposed to developing our community. I think what they're opposed to is things that are going to impact our riverfront. And a high-rise, and housing is, is needed, we do need housing. But that kind of housing is not the housing we need. We have plenty of housing that we've lost in our downtown community, and it's all went to Airbnbs. And I know because I have, I have tons of kids that no longer have affordable housing downtown that has been redeveloped into Airbnbs where now all this housing is not available. Downtown, there's a stifled market. We don't have anything. It's either you have a lot of money and you can buy it and you can fix it up, or it might not be very nice. I don't think anybody's opposed to any of these projects except for the one on the riverfront. It's kind of got slid in with things that people probably do approve. And I think, you know, if you're going to build something high-rise and you want it to be something that's going to develop something for our community instead of thirty or forty people or whatever it is that's going to have apartments, if you're going to make a high-rise, make it something that's going to be community-friendly. Another, a museum, something that would be an attraction that people would approve of. But I don't think anybody's going to want anything that's going to be that high, and yes, it is not that high when you think about that. But when you get down there and you look at it, it is higher than anything else. And I think that is the problem. And it's not even on the outskirts of the town, it's right in the middle of the riverfront. And I think that's why people are concerned. They don't want the beauty of that riverfront ruined. And it would be right there. It's right there. So I think that's the opposing, and then what's, what happens next? Oh, let's get rid of Fireman's Park, let's build something there. Oh, let's get rid of this. Oh, this person has this property, let them build something that's high. Then you have that little- Then you have that little domino effect, I think that's where it is. I think a lot of people like the other things, and I think the other one getting slipped in with it is the problem. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
I'm Colleen Johnston-Gerdet, I live at seven oh five E Second Street. And I was gonna say something about zoning, but I'm gonna wait till Monday and say that. But my, we keep hearing about, we need affordable housing, we need affordable housing. My daughter lives in Philadelphia and spends less on rent than her friend who lives in downtown Madison. So, what is this affordable housing that's going up on the hill? Is it actually affordable for our people?
Very affordable.
What, what is the?
It's financed by the investors who are buying low-income housing tax credits and, uh, the first ninety-three units, and will be second ninety-three units behind that. It's all based upon income bands of, of the, the city residents.
And what are those income bands?
Uh, probably from twenty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars of household income.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had another question.
Now, he was referring to the apartments on the hill.
I understand.
Okay.
So we, we're, but I, I understand the need, and we're attacking it. None of those are easy. And remember, what we're trying to do is convince somebody else to bring their tens of millions of dollars here to do it.
Right, but my other, that's, thank you for saying that, 'cause it reminded me, my question, who's gonna live in this high-end housing? Where are they gonna work?
Uh, we hear over and over again of our industries and, uh, commercial companies in Arm County that there are, there are limitations on hiring people because there's no place to live when they get here. And these are a mix of people, but, uh, a lot of professionals.
Okay, so then, we're going back again, there's no place to live here. How many Airbnbs are in Madison, and are there any restrictions on that?
Uh, I don't know.
There's slightly over a hundred and twenty, and the trend is actually falling. And a lot of people are selling their Airbnbs and opting to buy to live in town. So it's a trend that's kinda started the last six to eight months. So it was hovering around eighty.
'Cause that's a lot of housing that we've lost in downtown Madison.
Well.
And will it be affordable now because these people have put this money in their Airbnb? Are people gonna be able to buy those houses downtown?
That's a county-wide.
Okay. 'Cause I know, we've talked about living downtown, I've lived downtown for thirty years. It's taken me thirty years to get my house to a point where we, where, it's beautiful now, Lucy, isn't it?
It is beautiful.
It has taken us thirty years because I teach it, I taught here, and my husband had to commute to Louisville. So, the real problem is, you can build whatever you want, who's gonna pay to live there? Thank you.
Based on our investor, a lot of people would think a little bit. It is high-quality housing.
They usually rent them out before they're even built. So, Lucy? And I did look up high-rise and looked up the definition from an architectural perspective, and it was twelve stories or more, and I think it was seventy, seventy-five, I hear you.
Nobody can hear what you said.
Can't hear you.
So, I did look up architecturally what a high-rise qualifies as a high-rise. It's twelve stories high, and it's usually around seventy feet. So this is under a high-rise definition.
If we could, please hold the conversation down.
Is there anybody else, anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on this resolution?
It's fifty-three units, Shelley, yeah. Fifty-three apartments. The apartment project on the Hilltop, it's an construction house, nine three units, and that's just the first phase.
Hi, um, my name is Meg Perry, I live at five oh seven East Main Street. And my question is this, I mean, we've been listening to this now for about an hour. And, um, it seems as if there's been a fair degree of market research done, to which we're not privy. And I would like to know, you know that there are people, I guess, from conversations you've had with your developer, uh, who are interested in renting these apartments. Can we find out more about them, and how you know this? It's not been disclosed, as far as I know, to the public.
Yeah, the city, over the years, has done, and, and also worked with Hannover College, uh, the Jefferson County Madison Community Foundation for its own housing studies, which is why we know this is a priority. The developers are actually investing the money, those who are investing fifteen or twenty-five million dollars, for example, also have their own market studies done. Because remember, we're not taking the risk, the financial risk, the investors are. These are various new, uh, developers that are familiar with all the markets across the state. There's also the Indiana Community Health, Community and Housing Development Agency, which does statewide, uh, market research. And this is a very crime problem statewide. So, yes, there is a conclusion that we need more housing of all spectrums, the single-family, all ranges of rental, rental apartments. They'll unlock the supply that is non-existent in Madison.
But does she have access to?
Developers will take, there's multiple studies, and we have, we have one, I don't have, I'm not privy to whatever our developer is using to determine, uh, the risks they're willing to take here.
Could we get access to them?
Uh, I can share with, I can share with the public hours, um, and it's the developers' market research, and they are the ones that establish the rent levels, and it's all market-based. And, and again, they wouldn't be doing this if they didn't believe the market was there.
Or the data money made for it.
Correct. I mean, that's with every, everything.
Cake Brown, six oh six East Second. It's the location. Everybody is listening because of the, the location. Don't do it there, find someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
One quick note about the data and the housing study. Um, we did complete a housing study at the end of last year, and so I will make sure that that copy of that gets put on the website so everybody has that form, or they can look at it.
You should have the project page of these, uh, work with Anna, and that'll put information out there about all the projects.
I can get that, I can get that, so that will be put on there.
Sandy Pump, Sandy Palmer, one oh five East Third. We're talking about this developer as though it is his done deal?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else? Okay, we slightly went out of order, I don't know if we had a motion.
I don't think we did.
Is there a motion, uh, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash AC?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, and I think you have all the comments, uh, we'll call them.
Patrick Tavano?
No.
Arla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Josh Shaper?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
Josh Fluber?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We'll move on with the rest of our agenda, that includes two of, I'm sorry, three other bills. I know Joe has to excuse himself. I wanna thank everybody who came tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, it's gonna be just as good, I promise.
Okay, so we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, re-establishing the Cumulative Capital Development Fund.
Give everybody a chance to. All right, well, I'm hearing a nod in the back there, Mr. Bellamy, uh, we'll restate what our legislature editor just said. You can hear me back there. My voice will probably project a little bit more, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six, and just a reminder, ordinances take two readings typically unless rules of procedure, uh, and rules are waived. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, re-establishing the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. Looks like I'm presenting this. Uh, Council, you've heard me talk a lot this year about legislative changes that's going to reduce our property tax revenue by about a half a million dollars or more each year for the next three years, and then going up from there. But there is a current provision in our tax code called the Q cap development fund. And that is established by state statute, uh, with a maximum rate established of five cents per one hundred dollars of net assessed value. And that is used for a lot of different lawful purposes, but we use it to fund, uh, repairs and maintenance. It funds sidewalks, it funds money into our, uh, Main Street reserve or Main Street reinvestment. And, and the City of Madison adopted and established its rate in nineteen eighty-five. And as we've dealt with in many, many instances before, many of our ordinances are not modern enough, and they do not, uh, serve our purposes today. In the mid-nineties, in nineteen eighty-five when this ordinance was adopted, it was a requirement that, uh, the city re-establish it every three years. We can't find any record of it being, uh, re-established after its original establishment. But in the mid-nineties, the state statute changed, and it said that cities no longer have to re-establish it only unless they're gonna change the rate. Uh, our current rate is, uh, three point three four cents for one hundred dollars of net assessed value. The maximum rate is five cents, so we're looking at about a one point six cent increase, uh, for this. And, and I think Council would agree, uh, we have a lot of facilities and infrastructure that needs to be maintained. And with the loss of revenue identified through the now Senate Enrolled Act, uh, one, that the governor signed a couple of weeks ago, we'll be needing in order to, um, determine what impact that's gonna have on our, on our community, our investment strategies, uh, and then how we regulate that revenue. But we are in desperate need for additional capital to invest in our infrastructure that is not funded through our operating budget. So, what you have here is the, uh, first reading of this ordinance to re-establish the Q cap development rate from three point three four cents to five cents. I'll just finish up there, two reading, there'll also be a public hearing on this on May the twentieth. Tonight's just the first reading, any comments or questions?
Can you explain more where that amount was derived from, like, where's that extra increment coming from?
It's a, a property tax levy. So it's, uh, it comes from a variety of all parcels in the, in the city, and it, it gets incorporated into our district rate, which is county-wide. So it's a mix of, it's a mix, mix of homes, commercial property, industrial property, and personal property. When I say personal property, I'm not talking about our cars and jewelry. It's about manufacturing equipment, uh, other industrial equipment. And there is also a control in all of this. Uh, so once this maximum rate gets established by Council, uh, then we go through the budgeting process and through the budget adoption process, the final rate as well as the final tax rate across all of our appropriated funds will be established. And that'll happen, this is the first step. This process has to conclude by the end of May, and then, uh, probably by the end of June, early July, we'll start the twenty twenty-six budget discussions. That'll happen, and that will conclude in November. So we're still, again, a lot of work to do on this part.
I, I know it's early, and it may have not have conducted this, but, um, what do you see the net growth from the, the price change to be? Do you have a gross sum that?
In, it, in, um, there's a lot of factors, uh, because you have to look at, and it has to be drilled down by parcel. Uh, and then there's also the constitutional property tax caps that protect all the taxpayers here of, 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 of one percent properties. With some estimates that we have on the twenty twenty-four paid twenty twenty-five net assessed values, and after taking into consideration, uh, circuit breakers, which are credit back to property owners for, uh, taxes they would have paid between the difference of the, um, uh, tax rate based upon the, uh, net assessed value and the one, I'm sorry, the, the net assessed value after deductions and the one percent rate on the gross value, we estimate approximately about a hundred thousand dollars. And that, that's what would be applied to our existing Q cap fund to help us make continued investments in what I just mentioned, infrastructure, particularly facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other comments or questions, any comments or questions from the audience?
We're talking pennies here, uh, Charles Rickett Center on Center West First Street. Uh, we're talking pennies, but, uh, to go from three point, point zero three, three, four to point oh five is, uh, about a fifty percent increase. So, I'm sorry I didn't catch all your information, but how much money did you say this would?
It may, it may raise, depending upon where net asset values and deductions land. Because of the new Senate Enrolled Act, it may land at about a hundred thousand dollars. And take that into contrast relative to, the city's operating budget is approximately fifteen million dollars, and it's funded by approximately seven and a half million dollars of property taxes. So it's a small, relatively small increase overall. Uh, and then also take that into consideration with the property tax, uh, changes with the Senate Enrolled Act.
So this won't, uh, impact our real estate taxes all that much?
I, I don't believe so, sir.
Any comments, anybody?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
How much will it impact our taxes, our real estate tax?
Yeah, I think that.
If it, say you had a hundred dollar tax bill this year, what do you think it would be?
I don't know, I would like to find that out as well.
I, I can give you an estimate, I can answer that question. Uh, and again, there's a lot of variables. Most property taxpayers, I don't believe, will feel any increase at all. In fact, some will be, again, the plan with Governor Braun is to have some property tax relief and actually give a credit onto your property tax bill. But ignoring all that, if, hypothetically, if you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it would probably increase your taxes by about thirteen dollars a year. That's the estimate, sir.
Thank you.
It'd be mine, I meant that the one percent residential would be capped as well.
It'll be mine.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so given the tax environment in City of Madison, I guess, good or bad, any incremental changes to the tax rate since that certain level, three dollars and ten cents or so? It, it's at that level right now, so, you know, what was it, point one, point two, uh, cents?
Well, one point six cents.
One point six cents. Um, it would be my expectations that all one percent properties would be at the tax cap. Um, so they would be limited to one percent of their net assessed value, less the, up to three hundred dollar tax credit that they would shoot annually. Um, so we would likely see this additional hundred thousand dollars being through how circuit breaker credits are allocated across all the units of the county. Uh, it gets, it gets kinda complicated as to how it actually works. But as far as like, what you would see on a one percent residential tax bill, I would expect to see no change from something like this.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick, one percent means all occupied homes.
Yeah, great point, so, yeah, single-family, um, owned homes, non-rental units, capped at one percent. Most, if not all, are already at the one percent tax gap, so any additional rates that this, you know, city or county would impose on top of that would, would not change their tax for one percent properties.
Second home grounds, commercial properties, industrial properties.
Likely not even two percent properties, uh, likely. Like, so there's a lot of crossbones in Senate Bill one that's going on right now, but we're.
And, and again, the way all this kinda gets through the process, um, we won't really know until late December when the Department of Local Government Finance, uh, sends us our approved budget report. And they will be calculating along the way estimates for our city. And they will be calculating along the way estimates for us to use on how much of that circuit breaker is. So all this does is allows us to establish the rate at the five cents. And just FYI, in nineteen eighty-five, it was twelve cents. So it has statutorily been coming down and has come down and the cap is five cents, but just strange history. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Any additional remarks on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six? Right now, we'll move, that'll move to second reading on May the twentieth. You want me to repeat readings? Go ahead, why don't you just project your voice a little bit, because I know that they may have a little trouble not.
There's a lot of talking in the back there. Okay, so ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Madison, Indiana, amending the zoning map of the city of Madison, Indiana. And this is in regards to thirty-four eighty-three North Michigan Road. And there are two parcels, thirty-nine dash zero eight one four zero zero zero, zero one six zero 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 dash zero zero six. And thirty-nine dash zero eight one five zero 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 dash zero one four, point zero 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 dash zero zero six.
This, this rezoning request came before the plan commission, I believe it was at our last meeting. It received a favorable recommendation from the plan commission. This is a, it's a home where the owner also keeps farm animals there, which is why they were requesting the residential agricultural zoning there in the buffer zone. And it's, it's one of those properties that when the zoning was established out there, it kind of got swept up. It was a, it's been a residential property and it got swept up into light industry M one zoning. And so this is for them to allow them to, to make improvements to their home and continue utilizing it as a home, which is not possible under the current zoning.
This is the property right next to Madison County Park House, right?
Yes.
That's where.
Is this spots, I mean, is this an example of spot zoning?
It's, this, it was a difficult discussion for the plan commission. It's, it's, it is diagonal with other RA zoning. At the, so there, at that intersection, there is other, other RA zoning.
Yeah, I don't have any objection to it. I just know that sometimes we gotta do that in order to conform the properties for the uses.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules and to push this zoning ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven to a second reading today.
Officer, you're right.
Any discussion? Comments or questions? Roll call for suspension of the rules.
Patrick Tebano?
Yes.
Karla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Attila?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
Josh Wilber?
Yes.
Okay. Rules have been suspended. We go to second reading. Any discussion? Any comments or questions? Clear that, roll call.
Patrick Tebano?
Yes.
Karla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Attila?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
Josh Wilber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, counsel. We'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight. Sorry, I jumped up.
Would you like to read this last part of the day?
Nope.
It's ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Madison, Indiana, amending the zoning map of the city of Madison, Indiana. This is moving from heavy industrial to residential medium density for eleven forty-five West Second. Parcel number thirty-nine dash zero eight dash three four dash three three four dash one one three point oh 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 point dash zero zero seven.
Tell you again, this is a similar situation as the previously discussed property. This is at eleven twenty-five West Second Street, down by the, by the Marina. It's a property on the south side of Second Street that has been caught up in heavy industry zoning and the, it's always been a residential structure and the homeowners unable to make improvements to the property. There is currently residential property, residentially zoned property across the street. And I believe it's, everybody's hope this whole section of the industry would be reexamined as part of the ongoing rezoning ordinance that's being worked on because that entire stretch down through there is just a very funky set of zoning regulations that prevent a lot of, a lot of structures that have always been residences from being used.
And it's a prime example that we're not trying to necessarily commercialize all of the room front and by bringing it up back there. So hopefully that trend can keep working, to work towards doing that.
That's a really good point. The south side of Second Street here, most of it is residential, especially with the newer condos that are just west of there. So this would be a very proprietary residence.
The property just to the west of that is also residential, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's, it's still just, it's, it's a heavy industry.
So I'd like to again move to suspend the rules and push this zoning also to a second reading.
Or second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Go to second reading. Roll call.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, comments or questions? This is on the motion to suspend the rules. Go to second reading.
My name is Juan Heath. I live on nine eighteen West Main Street. I understand what you just said about that being residential and that you're not opposed to having residential down there. That in town stinks. I just want to say that, but as an odor.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna ask if you can clarify.
Anybody else? Roll call on the motion to suspend rules. Go to second reading.
Sheriff Patrick Tebano?
Yes.
Karla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Attila?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
And Josh Wilber?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Now we'll go to second reading. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'm gonna go to comments and questions after we get to.
I'll second.
Was that Josh?
Yeah, I'm.
Josh, oh, Jim and Josh? Any comments or questions? Any discussion? Right then, roll call.
Patrick Tebano?
Final approval? Yes.
Karla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Attila?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
Josh Wilber?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, that will conclude the bills and resolutions. Well, moving on to the rest of the agenda. Counsel, are there any reports, recommendations, or other business from standing select committees of city council? I will make, here, here none. I will, what's on the agenda is, I've talked a lot about this year's legislative session. And there's probably several hundred bills that are in front of the governor right now to sign, including the state budget, the property tax bill, road funding, annexation, it will franchise fees, a whole host of hundreds, literally hundreds of other bills. You've also heard me talk about the financial impact that we'll have to decide will, will be under the, the new tax reform. And it's going to be significant. But what we also have to do is identify ways to overcome those reductions in property tax revenue, find replacement revenue that's reasonable to approve, to continue the delivery of very essential services by the city of Madison, as well as our momentum of investing in our community, particularly roads and sidewalks, ADA accessibility, tourism, and the list goes on. That's going to take a lot of work over the summer. So I'd like to appoint a finance committee, a sustaining committee, to work with the, our director of finance, the mayor's office, our clerk treasurer's office, through the budget crafting, to present to the community later this summer. And I nominate Councilman Schaefer, Bartlett, I'm sorry, I appoint Councilman Schaefer, Bartlett, and Storm. Moving on, we have a report of city officials. Manny McGee?
Good evening, counsel. I will be very brief. It's all good news here. Last week, we had two bid openings for two different projects. First one is, as you're aware, the CCMG project, the Community Crossings Management Grant Funding for infrastructure. And we have dedicated that for twenty twenty-five to be on Main Street. So we had three companies that bid on that. You have in front of you the bid sheets, the summaries for all three companies. And the bid that was accepted yesterday is from All-Star Paving for this job. It came in at one point two to eight million dollars and that is less than what was awarded in the grant, so that's good news. We're evaluating the numbers and taking a look at what we might be able to, to do with that. Okay? And then the Madison Transfer Station, you've also been aware of that, that we have been looking at upgrading, making upgrades at the transfer station. We had two bidders on that project and the one, All-Star Paving did bid on that one as well, but SIDAM Contracting came in lower on that bid. And on that, what we had done is a base bid, which was the minimum of things that we needed to accomplish, the sort of emergency items. And then three alternates that we asked them to bid separately, separate dollars. And the good news is there is enough funding left in that project and the fund for this project that we're able to do all of those. So we did approve the six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar total to get it all done.
A couple of questions.
Yes.
Not, no problem with any of the bids or whatever, but just looking at the line of bids, surprising how varied some of these line items are, where one contractor is really high on one, another contractor is really high on another. Do you have the opportunity in the process to inquire about some of those differences since they're sealed bids?
Don't. I stay away from that process once the bid specs go out, but it's how they make their adjustments, so sure. And then two other things. Did you have a question?
Well, can you remind us the, of the upgrades or whatever that are going to happen at the transfer station?
Yes. Mayor's probably better to speak on that than me because I don't think I brought my notes.
Yes. In fact, if you look, I think this was included in your binder, but there's the cover letter from JTL. Was that in yours?
It wasn't printed, it was only, you know.
It was not.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So the, it includes pavement, concrete, drainage, and fence replacement, a pre-engineered steel build, building and foundations for the recycling compactor. It includes a concrete wall and buttresses for the recycling compactor slab. It includes replacement of the building siding and roof. We haven't had any major improvements there since the transfer station was opened in the mid eighties. And this was, this is the last phase of a two-year project on our TSO minorization plan, much needed. And it also brings some cost efficiencies at, relative to the weight that, that comes out of there on, at the TSO.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty comprehensive. I do want to mention too, just that on the, on the Main Street, just to bring us all back to history. This, this all started in two thousand fourteen. And then in two thousand twenty, the road was actually transferred to the city of Madison and we got to work immediately on a master plan. So five years later, this is how funding always works, is put, put together your plan, do your engineering, apply for your funding. There's a call for projects. And then they say in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, you get the money in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Well, twenty twenty-five is here and I'm happy to say we're finally working on Main Street, but it will take the, the, the next three to five years to do it. But we're starting on the transfer some part instead of talking about it.
They're in the next phase, which is the end of the year.
Maybe on the transfer station, I assume we have drawings for the new layout or where do we build it? Right next to the existing structure on the south side or is it some new stuff?
The, the building is where it's at now, the big building. And then adjacent to that is a slab where they use for the recycling.
So we're putting walls up.
And it will be putting a buttus wall and a roof and surrounding on it to keep the recycling area dry and clean.
The roofing was the most important piece because the recycling gets wet and then we pay more to have it hold. I just wanted to add two other things to, and the mayor's already spoken about the House enroll or the Senate enroll bill and how we're trying to anticipate what that will mean for us. There are a lot of estimates coming out. We'll be working with Erie quite a bit, I'm sure, on trying to figure out what that means for us. But for this year's budget, the mayor has ordered me to find reductions in the twenty twenty-five budget already. Five percent over the year, so roughly we have half the year left, so I'll be looking at finding two and a half percent to, to cut and reduce from this budget. And then we are also in a hiring freeze. We have not eliminated any positions, but we will not be creating or hiring any new positions until we find out how it sorts out for us.
A lot of planning, again, months and months, and this will go all the way to the end of the year.
And does that include seasonal hires? Like I know in our Parks Department, we have.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Your, your Parks Department has seasonal, temporary, all of that.
And that's already in the budget, so we're okay on that.
It needs, and yes, and we are good on the budget. It just needs, the budgets need to be managed to those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. As we are rolling, rolling on, we do have, I know we've had a lot of public comments tonight. We have public comment section for the sign up sheet and then I'll close with a couple of comments before we adjourn.
Okay, so I'm pretty sure most of these people have already spoken and probably don't want to come again, but I'm gonna read the names and then you can tell me from there. Randall Bellamy.
I do like him.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions, actually, that have been bothering me for a while. Who, who is in charge of enforcing the paving, repaving of sidewalks when someone has redone their sewer and all that kind of stuff? Is that an ordinance?
That goes through our, yes, there's an ordinance with regards to excavations. We spent a lot of time on that a couple of years ago to improve. But that ordinance is managed through the permit process, actually, which mainly is managed through our building and planning department.
And why are there two different places on, well, now three different places on, there are on East Street that have had the concrete broke, the sidewalk broken up and have not been repaired in the two and a half years that I've looked at?
I, I can't answer that, but if, if you could give us those locations, I will ask our building inspector to look at those things. And I will tell you, this is a really difficult process. And we have had tremendous damage to our sidewalks and streets because of excavations by contractors or homeowners without permits and also without the standards and bonding that we now require in our, in our, in our process. So if, if, if you have, if you've identified areas that need to be addressed where their excavation, excavation has occurred, we'll deal with it. If there is a permit that's outstanding and the surface has not been restored, we will deal with that. So if you please let us know, we'll take care of it. But yes, there is, there is an organized process for it.
Okay.
And I feel as passionately about you as you do about our sidewalks.
And did you say they were all on East Street? Is that correct?
All three of them are.
Okay, thank you.
Between what, which blocks?
Well, the first one is between Third and Main. It's by East School.
East Street.
It's a new one that they just got done. And they've got it, oh, it's terrible.
And there's also a time period they have to complete the restoration.
I understand that. So I'm not complaining about that one so much. But there's another one on the first block between Main and Second Street, again, on the west side of the street.
Between Main and Second, on East Street?
On East, yes. And there's also one between First and Vaughn. And I know these very well because I use my power wheelchair to walk the dogs and I have ruined three wheels and they're forty bucks each on all the different problems with the sidewalks.
Please report those when you see them and thank you for recording them now. Reporting building and planning reports to your councilperson, we'll take care of it.
Okay. I think I'll just stop there.
Thank you.
Next on my list is Jan Vitris.
I already spoke, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Viterna?
Oh, yeah, good job.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, Mark Viterna, 716 West Third Street. First of all, I'd like to say that I think the current administration has done a really good job with economic growth, bringing a lot of development, business, boosting a lot of our numbers. I mean, you know, tax revenue, things of that nature, so I really appreciate that. And this is a tough one, right? It's a very contested issue here, and I think that, you know, I've, I've only been here for about eight years. I'm from the big city, right? So I came here to get out of the big city, and really, you guys don't know how good you have it here. Like, as far as, for one thing, the city actually does listen to its people. I mean, try living in a big city and going to a council meeting there, you know? Like Louisville or Cincinnati, like, they won't listen to you. So I did have some objections of a few of the people in the audience saying that, you know, the city doesn't listen, because they've always listened to me and been very willing to hear the public. To be honest with you, I was kind of on the fence on this project before I came tonight. I tallied up, just out of curiosity, during the public statements, how many were for and how many were against this. I counted four neutral, which, you know, being any would have been myself as well, not knowing, you know, how can you approve something without knowing the plan? We got some of the details, but not a lot of the details yet. I did count 14 opposed, and I counted two for it. I feel that it's somewhat similar to the social media debacle that's been going on, coming up at this meeting. So I definitely approve of the funds being approved tonight. I think that's not a problem, because it's been clear they can be reallocated, depending on what the actual vote is on the 12th. You know, we can use those for other funding, but, you know, I would just caution, having come from big cities, having colleagues that have lived in places like Fishers, Indiana, Austin, Texas, or, you know, Gallenburg, Tennessee, who saw economic growth that they couldn't keep up with, and they either resent the community if they are still there, or they've left. So I would just like to say that I think, hear what, you know, the people have said tonight, going into that May 12th meeting, and I would hope that when it comes to a vote on the 12th, that we would see at least more of a 50-50 split or something, right? Because this is a pretty contested issue. I would be disappointed if it was a one-to-nine vote in one way or the other, because I feel like the community's split, but maybe more opposed, it sounds like, so. I'm actually, I'll, I'll still say that I'm in the neutral territory, because I feel it's unfair to not hear all of the actual numbers, right? This is just, you know, earmarking the money, but I would encourage folks to bring all of that relevant information on the 12th. And actually, I would even suggest that we hear it and then table it, you know, to actually be able to digest that until the next planning meeting. But again, I do plan on showing up for that meeting, and I would like some additional details around, specifically, you know, the height's a big one. I'm not going to touch on that through the zoning, but definitely get those numbers correct. And I, I was actually impressed that Mary actually knew the, the FPG and the FEMA numbers, which I was, you know, going to bring up, so that was nice to know. But I also heard someone say 12 stories and 75 feet, so like, we need to make sure we have herd hugs in a row. And, you know, I'd also like information about the, I think it's the .73 acres is going to be the entire parcel, maybe, so like, maybe some details on that, and anything that the, you know, the construction company could share, so we could have some visibility into it and whether or not we have other estimates or something. So I think, you know, if you're really that strong about it and feel that maybe it's not been, you know, represented fairly tonight, you still want to kind of settle the case, I think that would definitely help the community if you could bring as much to the table regarding those specifics, because you might be able to sway a few more people. But I do appreciate, thanks for everything you do. It's a tough job, and that's all I got.
Thank you.
Real quickly, uh, thank you, and there'll be a lot of detail shared in the planning commission about the district, just about this property. Keep, keep that in mind, and, you know, and I'll ask this too. Next time you're going down Bond Drive, really look around. Sometimes we're around our environment so much that what's there becomes a bit invisible as it sinks into the environment until you start taking a fresh perspective at it. And I would say, keep an open mind. We're also trying to solve a, a problem, as well as improve our community, our econom, economy at the same time. And then I'll just mention too, is that, you know, that there's a planning commission meeting on the 12th, and then there's a city council meeting that'll discuss the planning committee, the planning commission's recommendations on the 20th.
Yep.
And then another city council meeting to have a second reading on the planning commission's recommendations in June. So there's back to back to back. There's a lot of public discussion we had, and I appreciate each and everybody who spoke tonight. I'm not one way or the other. I'm an advocate for Madison, and we're offering solutions. If someone else has a solution other than do nothing, I can tell you, that doesn't bode well for our future.
Right.
But it may be, let's do something different. Or it may be, let's make some changes here. Or it may be, for the better good of our community, this is the right approach right now. But just saying, let's look at our riverfront a little, a little more keenly over the next couple of weeks.
It's definitely a turning point, like a lot of folks have said. This, this might be kind of that, you know, if this was Back to the Future, like, this is like when Biff Steels the Comic Book or something. You know, this is like, this could potentially be like where things change one way or the other. And that's not to say would bad be bad or good either way, right? Because I can't predict the future. Just remember, you guys are on the same team, you know? Like, we're all, we're all residents here, right? So now I got to watch myself too. We're all going to get along, right? So, appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Kevin Kellums already spoke, and I don't think he's still here. Sandy Palmer, thank you. Stephanie Cox, or Steve?
Oh, there was.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're good? Deanna Shelley?
She spoke.
You must speak again? Okay.
Well, my main concern is...
Pull that microphone really close to you. Thank you.
Is our historic area and anything that we do downtown. So I've worked on this, so I'm going to read it to you. Of course, everyone here in this room is really concerned about what's best for our city. And so there's, these major decisions are coming up. But we know that no action will not harm. Some action, it could. So no action could be always right. So do you remember Charles Kuralt, who came through Madison? Well, he fell in love with our town too, and he was on the CBS Evening News. That was on the road segment. He was also CBS News Sunday Morning. And our city made the national news years before we had the recognition we have today. And his comment was, "They should build a fence around it and not let anyone touch it." There's where our temper has to come. What are we touching? The guidelines which qualify us for a national registry recognition need to be re-studied. Every administration should be well-fursted on what's in there and what we need to do to maintain this status, because it could be lost. Would we want to sacrifice this honor over a high rise? It is my belief that the city continually has to earn this, because one high rise will lead to more high rises. The big money will come in, take over the riverfront. It very well could, if that zone changes. And that price is too high and not worth it in the years ahead. I appreciate Mayor Courtney's foresight in preserving our crown jewel of fun, Crystal Beach. And this foresight needs, is needed now. So I was told back then, when I went to fight for the pool, that it was going on the hill and I could do nothing about it. Well, I dug in, and I bought it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I do suggest, I, well, I do not support a high rise. I'm not crazy about the amphitheater either, because I feel both are invasive to the natural ambiance that we now enjoy along Bond Drive. We've long been a favorite stop to the riverboat traffic, their passengers, to tourists that visit us so often. It's a delicate balance on that street that has been maintained and should continue. The city has allowed through the years residential structures that do not fit the downtown historic look. There shouldn't be anymore. The hilltop is the place for that. Madison has had a special draw for decades, and we all know that. Our magic continues to grow in awareness across the Midwest and across the country. We are so blessed to have the split of the old and the new, bounded by the river and the hills, protecting our treasure gem of the city that's right here. Our every move has to be weighed cautiously in regards to our downtown. Our lives are but dots in the sequence of time. And compared to the, our houses, they go on and on, you know, they're 200 years old.
Ms. Shelley, please wrap up your comment.
Sure, I'm at the last.
Thank you.
So we are entrusted with preserving what we are now, and with laying the groundwork with rules and regulations that will guide future generations in protecting our historic Madison. Let's keep the integrity of the downtown.
Thank you very much. Teresa Adler? Tom Stark? Meg Perry?
She spoke.
Yes, I just want to make sure that she's going to speak again. Russell Fossler? Mary Pat Ricketts? Charles Ricketts?
A couple of things. The zoning change resolution. I just wanted to say that there was a notice in the Courier on the 25th of April saying that a copy of that proposal was on file at City Hall for review. It was not available until today. That's over a week, and that's less than a week until the planning commission meeting. So I was asked that the planning commission be instructed to move their meeting on this particular resolution to their June meeting to give the public adequate time to review their resolution. It further states in the posting in the paper that the newspaper noticed that the hearing may be continued from time to time, as may be found necessary. Lucy, you said something about 12 stories and 75 feet?
Either, either.
That's about a six-foot-high ceiling in those places? If you go 12 stories and 75 feet, is that not what you meant?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
I think what you meant was a, a high rise would be 12 stories or more. This is four stories. That, if I clarified your point?
Correct.
Okay, just a few more points here, and I'll, I'll get out of your way. Speaking of the pictures that were up previously when I was talking, parking space requirements vary by the type of unit, and I believe rental units, according to code, must have two spaces per unit. And I suppose that will be under the building, since the building has to be elevated. And there also has to be space under there for dumpsters and garage containers. Also, other commercial units that might locate down there would have similar needs to accommodate customers. It should also be noted that ADA compliance is required in almost all cases, such as handicap parking and probably elevators to all the places that are sitting up on stilts. So according to this resolution changes only, there are dozens, I mean dozens, of approved uses that can go on down there. You should read them. Anything for heating and plumbing equipment sales to household equipment appliances sales, if anybody would want to put their business down there in the mud zone. The zoning change requests for all Bond Drive from West Street almost to Ferry Street, so one can assume that there will be other projects in the works that the public is not aware of or may not be formulated yet. Otherwise, the zoning changes would have been only for apartments, and then you would only have to approve that one lot. So if you change the zoning, you open the door. And once that door has been open, you can't close it. And once it's been open, there are ways to change called variances. That's a request to change restrictions and limitations for other circumstances that the ordinance normally prohibits. And people ask for variances all the time. You want to go higher, ask for a variance. Want to build closer to the property line, ask for a variance. It goes on and on, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm asking, do you really want all that thrown onto the riverfront? You won't recognize it. I don't want to open the door, do you? Thank you.
Perfect timing, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Ed Steegel? Suzanne Bradley? Bob Hartson? Hope I said that right. apologize if I didn't. Two more. Charmaine Drummond? And Robert already marked his name off, so that's it.
Okay. However, I would like to just ask for a moment of silence for Chris Taylor. Chris Taylor worked for the City of Madison for 42 years and passed away last week, so we just have a moment of silence for Chris's family. I appreciate it. Thank you. Our next meeting, again, our condolences to Chris's family and the somebody's golf course family, where he spent his, literally his life. Next meeting is Tuesday, May the 20th, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All fair and proper.
Aye.
Thanks everybody for being here.